It is ready.
Okay, well then would you please call roll?
Okay. Mr. Foster?
Here.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Here.
Chief Hill? Mr. Cronteras?
Here.
Mr. Riddle?
Here.
Mr. Roberts? Mr. Thames? Mr. Wilson?
Here.
Mr. Woods?
Here.
Six present.
All right, thank you Fred. I'd like to welcome everyone to the City of Homewood Planning Commission meeting. This is an online meeting. It's September the 5th, 15th, excuse me, 2020. We've called the roll. Gentlemen, there were minutes that were distributed in your packet and via email. If all are in agreement, I would suggest, I would entertain a motion to dispense with the reading and to accept them as distributed if there are any minor adjustments, if you could get with Fred afterwards.
So move.
I second.
Okay, I got a motion by Mr. Riddle in a second, by Mr. Cronteras. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you. Communications from the chairman, I have none. Communications from the vice chairman, Mr. Foster.
Yes, so just to update the other commission members on the phone or Zoom right now. This is going to relate to our business item number one and under old business and item number one under new business. In your packet, you should have received a copy of the amended tree ordinance. As a reminder, we previously voted on this last May, I believe, and it was under November. And then we huh, okay, sorry, my screen just went out. In this document that was in your packet is a marked up version of the ordinance with some summary comments still remaining showing changes that were made from the meeting of the subcommittee in July. As you will see here, this is, the changes were mostly semantic. We did clean up a couple of things that would like to point your attention to page two, number 20, just a clarification of a qualifying tree related to this ordinance. There are only trees that are greater than six inches in diameter. So that's a relatively decent sized tree. So small trees that a homeowner wants to cut down a crepe myrtle or something like that don't really apply. Moving forward, page five, we cleaned up the language related to the fine here, and I'm going to actually make a note, Fred, that caught another $600 reference in the document that needs to be, could still be addressed. The fines will be for any individual or businesses that fail to acquire permit for trees greater than or equal to six inches in diameter. And they will be, basically the fine will go to a tree fund or replace trees throughout the city. Page seven, just some general cleanup. I will point your attention to section E permitting for landscaping. Making sure that it is clear that land disturbance permits for commercial multifamily issued by the city are subject to landscaping requirements of this ordinance, not for individual homeowners. Exemptions, here we removed the West Homewood District. This is a specialized district we're all aware of. About 21 properties in West Homewood. As a note from Amy Mylum, who's the former president or chair of the Homewood Environmental Commission. The idea behind the exemptions were for our business districts downtown, Edgewood, etc. The West Homewood District is really a collection of individual parcels. And we want to make sure that we do enforce this ordinance as best we can in those areas. So we took that exemption out. Page nine, related to the MTD calculation. This basically is going to point to the fact that in no instance can there be fewer than one tree per lot. So someone can't essentially clear cut a lot and not either replace your tree or have a tree on it. Page 10, Fred, three quarters of the way down is where I noticed the $600 penalty. I can send you a markup on that if needed.
Okay.
It's right above the section G, start of that. Landscaping requirements, as I mentioned earlier, we've added the X's there in the last row for high density multifamily commercial, just so everyone is aware. Page 14, as it relates to the owner tenant essential for maintaining of landscape. They'll have 30 days within notification from the city building engineering and zoning department related to replacement plants, trees, etc. that have died, and they'll have 120 days to replace them. And then finally, under B there, yeah, no, next to finally. Under B, we've just deleted the language requiring landscaping, she said, out extensively. Essentially, this is redundant, wasn't necessary. And so we'll refer them back to the appropriate section in the zoning book related to that. Are there any specific questions from commission members now about the changes to the ordinance that I ran through relatively quickly there?
Jeff, could you kind of give us a brief history of how we got to this point?
Sure. So Billy says brief. I don't know if James and Billy remember, we probably started this tree ordinance process with a previous iteration of the Environmental Commission back in 2016 or 17. And some members of the BZA, I think we're involved. The the tree ordinance at that point went through several iterations with the Homewood Environmental Commission members going back and forth. It came back to us at one point. And then moved on back to the Environmental Commission. And then we received a copy, I believe, from council in November of 2018, late November, right before the holidays. That the city had hired a consultant to do and put together an ordinance that was a little more encompassing and also incorporated some of the concepts of this landscape plan, which is in this version here. The planning commission subcommittee met starting that December, moving forward through May, I believe. We met monthly and on three occasions, twice monthly for several hours with the consultant, the city arborist, Henry Hughes, two members of council, as well as members of staff to revise the ordinance that, to a point where we were relatively happy with it. That ordinance was approved and voted on by, voted on and approved by the planning commission last May. It went to, I believe, a council subcommittee and was returned to us with some significant changes and some additional comments from Amy Mylum, Homewood Environmental Commission, etc. It was scheduled to be voted on originally after we received it back in, I believe, November of 2019. And moving forward, obviously, we became very busy with downtown issues. And then obviously, the coronavirus hit early 2020. And shortly before the coronavirus outbreak, we had met as a subcommittee to review the changes. And it was determined that it would be helpful moving forward, and I don't know if you guys can see this on your screen now. There is a copy of a tree and landscape permit. This is a new permit that's been developed by the staff, specific to this ordinance that provides the names of the contractor, their Homewood Business License number, so to make sure that businesses that are cutting down trees have a business license in our community, at least the ones that are doing it correctly or properly, above board. It also addresses whether or not there's going to be an increase to impervious area by greater than 20%, which would necessitate this ordinance taking effect on a piece of property, again, to make sure that the minimum number of trees on residential lots and in and around our city is maintained. I would like to say right now, thanks to Fred, Vicky. Angie, if you played a role in this, thank you very much for putting this together. I think this is a nice permit, a great, a great initial step. We're going to see how this works. The permit fee is $50. For anyone that's bought a tree permit in the last several years, that's actually in line with what we, I pay personally for these. So somebody that, again, tries to follow all the rules, I appreciate a nice new form that is very easy to follow and use. And so, following receipt of this permit form, I believe in July, we met 21st, maybe, or 23rd. Reviewed these changes, circulated them back to staff, and they're here before you tonight for consideration when we go to the old business section of the meeting.
Right, thank you Jeff. With that, why don't we go ahead and open up old business? Jeff just gave you a report on item number one. Does anyone have any questions about that?
Jeff, I have one.
Go ahead, Jay.
Go ahead, Mark. I'll get it when you get there.
Mine's very quick. Jeff, have we, has the tree, tree fund, preservation tree fund been set up yet? Or is that something to be done in the future? Or do they currently have one that this money they talked about is going to go into?
Right. Fred, you can probably correct me if I'm wrong or answer this better than I have. The Environmental Commission has a tree fund currently. And my initial understanding was this fund will go toward, to that pot, for lack of a better term. It will not go to another fund elsewhere. It was strictly for repopulation of the Homewood Tree Canopy.
I believe you're correct, but if Vicky is online, she also might be able to respond to that.
That's an excellent question, Mark, and I can definitely talk to Matt and Michael Churchman, the new Homewood Environmental Commission.
This would want us to make sure that funds already set up and that we know that the money is going into this tree preservation fund, and it's not just the tree preservation fund, and it ended up somewhere else being used for something else down the road.
Right. Yeah, no, I shared that same concern. We've had that conversation multiple times in subcommittee, and we will, yes, absolutely. We'll make sure that it's for the repopulation of the canopy.
Okay.
Hey Jeff.
Yeah.
Is that someone speaking? Are you? Okay.
Thank you for clarifying that, Ms. Smith.
Okay, Jeff, my question is, when we discussed this the last meeting, on the individual permit for removal, did we ever get that satisfied?
Yeah, so what we, what we discussed was, and you and Billy and Vicky correct me wrong. So an individual cutting down a four inch diameter tree isn't really going to have a, and that's not, that's not a terribly small tree. That's a that's a decent sized tree in a homeowner yard. Really, what we're talking about are these trees that are, these lob lolly pines or some oak trees that, I mean, six inches is a fairly decent sized tree that, you know, as a homeowner, you would probably, especially given the proximity of the homes in our community. You would probably be that would probably be the, a really big tree for a homeowner to take down themselves.
Yeah.
That was, that was the justification behind it, is that essentially, this is likely the size of a tree you're going to have to get a professional to come and take down unless you are somebody very experienced and have equipment.
That, that was my question, I guess. You know, because I'm not going to say I'm experienced anymore so than, than anyone else, but on my property from doing the construction, we take down trees as needed, but if an individual were to take one down, we discussed maybe calling Slippant's if he did it without going to buy the permit. And, but I don't remember what we ended up as the
Yeah. Yeah, so if they replaced the tree within a month of taking it down, they're not subject to the fine. If they take it down and they don't have a permit, as long as they replace the tree.
That's what I remember. Exactly. Thank you.
Gentlemen.
Yeah, I have a question, Jeff.
Yeah.
About a month and a half ago, my next door neighbor had a fire that started from a shed that his swimming pool equipment were in. And completely burned two, two big, big pine trees. I mean, one of them was like maybe over 100 feet tall.
Yeah.
Now, is he obligated to replace him or because they were burned, he doesn't have to do that?
So it's not going to be because of burn. So likely, your neighbor, just knowing where you live, John, he has enough trees on his lot already to meet the minimum criteria.
I see.
Yeah, so he won't, he won't have a problem. Now, in the event he needs to take those trees down, he would need to meet the minimum criteria, which would be replacing it with a two and a half inch caliper native tree.
Two and a half inch, Rod?
Just like a tree from Lowe's. One of those trees you can buy at Lowe's to replace, to maintain a minimum number of trees on his lot or her lot.
So in other words, if he has enough trees in his yard.
He's fine. Yeah, it's, it's all based on, yeah, we have a minimum of one is the requirement, but yes, likely, knowing how many trees are on Lakeshore, that your neighbor would not have an issue.
Okay, all right, thank you.
We also discussed that in the event that there's a storm on a Friday night blows a limb or a tree onto a residence.
Exactly.
And you can't get a permit on Saturday, you know, we need to allow the homeowner to get the tree off of their house. And we gave them the month to replace it before we penalize them.
Yep.
Okay, that's what, that's what I hadn't remembered, but I just wanted to clarify. Thank you, Jeff.
Yep. Thanks, Billy, reminding us about the implement weather. And that's another thing, too, you know, I think with our staff being educated, too, about the purpose of the tree or permitting process and its ordinance, it's really to hopefully encourage people to plant trees and not to, not to be scared of taking one down that needs to come down.
Yeah, this, this is what needs to happen is, we need to make people more aware of the canopy aging and the process of replacing prior to them being taken out for some reason or another. But that takes time.
Okay.
Jeff, one more question.
Yeah.
You know, if the tree is, let's say, over 20, 30 years old, does that make a difference about the homeowner deciding to cut it down?
No, it has nothing to do with age. It's going to be all about the diameter of the trunk.
Okay, if the diameter of the trunk, let's say, like those two pine trees that even next door, they were maybe one of them, I know it was probably three feet or maybe four feet.
Yeah. So if he had a four foot diameter pine tree, I'd hope he would call the company to take it down, because I'd be nervous about them doing it at my house.
Down and took it down, yeah.
Yeah, the company, the company is responsible in that instance. They'll be the ones getting the permit.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, if there are no further questions, Jeff, I'd like to open this up for public comments. If someone wants to make a public comment, if you'll enter through the proper procedure into the chat, go ahead and list, and then Mr. Wallace will queue you up.
Mr. Chairman, this is Vicky.
Yes.
Okay, I did want to insert something else here for your consideration. There's a couple of places where we say, the city arborists, the city arborists. And we're thinking, we were thinking today that, or in a case where it's possible, they could have a licensed bonded arborist, as long as he was a professional. They may be able to get with him quicker than they could with Henry.
Okay, that's, that's a good point, recognizing that, you know, storms come through, etc. And things happen in everyone's life. If no one else is, if no one else objects, I would say that we change that to appropriate licensed arborist in every case, if you're, if you're comfortable with that, Vicky.
Yes, I think we need to give him an option there. I just want it to be a professional, not, you know, somebody's granddad, but
Sure.
It shouldn't have to be just one, it shouldn't have to be just Henry, you know?
That's, that's true. I mean, something could happen in Henry's life and he can be gone, and we could be hamstrung.
Yeah.
This is Brady Wilson. I'd just like to add on the timeframe and the situation following acts of God, right, weather acts. The 30 days may be extreme for someone to be assuming, of course, that anybody in this situation is not trying to take advantage of a storm by going and knocking down a tree. Most people are really reacting and doing what they are supposed to do with their lot and their neighbors and everything else, I would assume. I just, sorry, I didn't ask about putting my name in the sorry.
Sure. Mr. Wallace, is there anyone that wants to speak?
No, sir.
All right, then the public discussion is closed. If there are no further questions about item number one under old business, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So move.
I'll second. This is Jeff.
Okay, I got a motion by Mr. Riddle in a second by Mr. Foster. Fred, will you call the roll, please?
All right. Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Cronteras?
Yes.
Mr. Riddle?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Abstain.
Mr. Woods?
Yes.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes. Thank you. The the long awaited tree ordinance passes will now be sent on to council. Item number two, recommendations for nominating committee and election of officers for the position of planning commission chairman and vice chairman for the 2021 term. Mr. Riddle, do you want to bring us up to speed as to where you are with that?
Yes. I was asked earlier today to reconsider voting on this tonight, maybe put it off until the October meeting. My idea of that was putting it off would not, in my opinion, make a difference because of the way I have it figured. The first planning commission member wouldn't drop off until 2022, so he would have a full year to serve whoever it may or may not be, you know, so I was gonna email you guys this afternoon and I didn't, it accidentally slipped my mind. My, I lost my father-in-law Sunday. And so we've been taking care of funeral arrangements this afternoon, and it just totally got out of my, you know, just slipped my mind. But if you, you know, if someone would like to make a motion to carry this over, you know, I'd be glad to vote on that if that's what the committee would, commission would like to do. Otherwise, I have the recommendations for from the, not all the members, but the majority, some of them chose not to, to send anything in as far as the candidate.
Gentlemen, what is the consensus? Do we want to just go ahead and vote on this tonight?
So this is Jeff. I have no issue voting on this tonight. If, you know, if it's not carrying over two weeks, I don't, I mean, because I don't think we have a scheduled meeting for October currently. And this also keeps us in line with our bylaws to appoint the officers in September. That's my personal opinion.
Yeah, this is John Cronteras. You know, I see absolutely no reason to postpone the voting tonight. I mean, I see absolutely, I don't understand why we have to be postponed.
Okay. If that, that seems to be the consensus. So let's just go ahead and, Mr. Riddle, give us the results of your research.
Okay, my research has four nominations for Mr. Foster as chair and four for Mr. Martin Woods as vice chair. There was also one nomination for Billy Higginbotham to remain as chair and Jeff Foster to remain as vice chair. So the consensus was that the two nominations for this year would be Jeff Foster's chair and Martin Woods as vice chair.
Okay, well, is that your recommendation? Someone want to make a motion that we vote on that?
Yeah, I make a motion to approve as the list of the candidates was presented by Mr. Riddle.
Second. Okay, we've got a motion in a second. Fred, will you call the roll, please?
All right. I did, by the way, who seconded that motion?
Wilson.
Wilson, all right, thank you, Wilson. All right. Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Cronteras?
Yes.
Mr. Riddle?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Woods?
Yes.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Moving right along, new business, item number one, proposed revisions to the city ordinance. Vicky, do you want to give us a little background on this?
Sorry, I had to look it up.
Go.
Not really. Vicky, we've lost your audio. Hey Brian, this is Jeff. Do you have any audio on Vicky?
I'm hearing the same as you. She was there, now she's gone.
Got it.
We hear you, Vicky, but it's very strained. It's very strained. Barely hear you.
I've got the volume turned all the way up.
There, now we can hear you. Now we can hear you. Whatever you're doing, keep doing whatever you're doing.
As you, if you'll remember, these go all the way back to March. And they got kind of put aside, but these are, these came to me primarily through the board of zoning adjustments, because they kept seeing the same request petitions over and over again on the same issues. And usually, that, when that happens, you know you got a problem when you get that many. Now, it, the first one that we talked about was the corner lot situation. And I know at the time it was added, there was a situation that they were trying to fix. And as usual, when you try to fix one, it kind of messes up a lot of others. So we have, I didn't count them, but we have quite a lot of small lots that are long and slender that sit on a corner. And when you take 25 off the front and 25 off the side, they're unbuildable, which, you know, our rules shouldn't create a situation where you can't do anything with your lot without getting a variance. So, and, and one of the problems, too, that apparently we were trying to fix, went back to something, somebody put in what we would consider a side yard, because the house was facing one way. And even though it was considered a front yard, something was put there that was disturbing to a neighbor whose house, I think, I think it was a situation where a side yard went to a back. But the only thing allowed in the side yard is a carport or driveway, and what was put there shouldn't have even been allowed anyway. And what was put there shouldn't have even been allowed anyway. So this ordinance would, we didn't need this to fix that. So one of the things I, I thought was, you know, putting it back where it was, which I, you know. And we would have a primary front and then you'd have your two sides and a rear, oh, and by the way, corner lots have no rear yard. As you know, you have two fronts and two sides. So when you get to accessory structures, it necessitates same thing. They have to go to BZA, they don't have a choice. So. I, I, one of the things, um, corner lots and residential districts have two front yards. Houses whose front are oriented parallel to a street shall maintain required front yard on such street. The front yard on the remaining street shall be regulated as a side yard. Now, that's one way to do it. That could go as low as, you know, go to five feet from the right away. So I don't know if you want it to go on the, you know, the lots that are less than fifty feet wide, they have a five and nine. So that would be the five side because you only have a house on one side. So anyway, I, I want to get your feedback. I did put that we shall treat them as a side yard, but I wrote you, I want some caveats in there.
I'm, I'm sorry, Vicky, I wasn't, I was preoccupied. Did you say that our, we, it was set for a fifty-foot setback, five and nine, is that correct? And then we go from there on the width?
Right. Say, say it's a, you know, fifty feet wide and it, and the house is facing one of the fifty-foot lines and that's the front. Well, it's gonna have a five and nine foot setback, but the nine goes against the nearest neighbor.
Exactly.
So that would, if you're on the corner, that's gonna be on the other far side. So your side setback there would only be five.
Actually, couldn't that, if that house on the side had a nine, that would allow the homeowner to use the five, wouldn't it? And then the ten on the other, on the street side.
Well, it's, no, it's five, on the five and nine, it's lots less than fifty-five feet wide. You put the nine, the nine goes on the side with the nearest neighbor. And the five goes on the side with the furthest neighbor. Well, if you're a corner lot, you're not gonna have a neighbor on one side.
Right.
So the, so the nine will have to go against the other neighbor, leaving that five up against the street. Or we could make it something like, but in no case shall be less than ten feet. Which would be a, a same as, uh, you know, a lot that had ten and ten.
Yeah, that's gonna, that's gonna put them having to build on a thirty-foot wide.
Yeah, that's gonna create the same problem we got now, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Which is why.
Why would it be, I mean, I, I don't mean to beat this horse to death, but if the house that is existing next door to the lot in question. It has a nine-foot setback adjoining the lot that we're talk, speaking of. Even though normally you would put the house being built as a five-foot setback on that side. And then the nine would go on the opposite side. So it's first come, first served, what I've always been, you know, instructed. But what you're saying is if the house is there with a nine-foot setback. Then the lot on the corner has to also have their nine-foot setback next door to that house. Is that correct? Does that make sense or is that crazy?
Well, you know, if one of them's a five and one's a nine, the way it's written now, the nine has to go against the nearest house. Well, if you're, on the other side's the street, so, you know, your, your nine wouldn't be on that side. It's, this doesn't, these aren't usually new builds. These are add mostly additions to home. When these come up, not always, but often.
Right, right.
So I just don't want them to get too close to the road, but then again, for years and years and years, that's the way it was, you know?
I think, in my opinion, leave it as it was originally. I mean, I don't have a problem with it, but I'm only one voice.
I just kind of want to get away from the two front yards because then you have no rear yard. You, and you've automatically made the, uh, the lot unbuildable by making two twenty-fives.
Can't do that.
Yeah, and we've done that and it's just, it's not right.
No.
I think what we discussed at our last, on our last call was we would go back to the way that it's always been. We attempted to fix it a year or two ago and that's created more problems and headaches, especially for the BZA. So what we will now be doing is going back to the way it was. Is that correct, Vicky?
That would be my recommendation.
And additionally, it would be either nine or five on one side. Depending on how the other house is set up.
Well.
If. That's the way I always understood it to be.
Well, worst-case scenario would be five feet.
Yeah.
Preferably it'd be nine. Right, Vicky?
That is correct, but worst-case would be five. And like I said, a lot of these is, are existing situations. Of course, home屋does have a lot of tear downs these days, but mostly what we see is additions that want to go another, you know. I got one coming up a foot and a half over. And, you know, it just, it bogs down the BZA for otherwise unbuildable lots, you know. It's unreasonable. So let's, let's, let's say we put it back where it was prior to having the two fronts.
Thank you. That's, that sounds reasonable.
Okay. And I'm gonna send these as soon as I.
Is there a public portion to this?
Well, there's several comments.
Well, I'm just curious. I've not, I've not been to a planning commission meeting before, so I don't know the protocol. I just had a question.
Well, you're, the public portion is not open yet.
Okay.
So please mute. We'll open the public portion and put your request in in the chat. Vicky, is, is that it for that one?
Yes, that is it for that one.
Okay. Speak about this item. Please put your name and address in the chat box now. You'll be added to the speaker list. You can unmute when your name is called. Does any commission members have any further questions of staff or Vicky?
Um, as it relates to this, the double front, no, I did want to comment on a couple items in the broader packet here. These are really just cleanups, text changes for the commission members. I know Billy, James and I went through these at our subcommittee meeting. But just so that they understand the other, I'm not sure if we're voting on just A here or are we talking about all of them, I guess?
Uh, no, we will.
Okay.
We will address them individually. That's how they're written up on the, uh, on the agenda.
Yeah, sorry, I just looked it down at the agenda. Yep.
Okay, with that, uh, Mr. Wallace, you want to unmute Mr. Jarman and then Ms. LaBeauf, will you call on them, please?
Yeah, Brian, go ahead. Mr. Jarman, you can go ahead.
Okay, um, thank you. I just had a question. I kind of came on the back into this, just got home. I heard the five and nine setbacks on corner lots was how that was gonna be. Will the lots still be subject to the variance? I'm sorry, five-year-old just showed up. If it is a wider lot, if it is a fifty-five-plus foot lot, would it have to adhere to the ten by ten?
Yes, it would be ten, yeah.
Okay, so we're basically just treating them like a, a normal lot at this point in time if we go forward with this.
Correct, and, and, and the front would be the orientation of the house, the front door, would be the front.
Right, okay. Yeah, and I was gonna chime in as well, but you did mention that we have had on the BZA several, several new builds lately that were corner lots. That seems to be kind of a growing trend. So getting out in front of this would be a good idea just from a BZA bog down standpoint. And that is all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Jarman. Uh, Mr. Wallace, you want to call on Ms. LaBeauf?
Ms. LaBeauf?
Yes, thank you. I just want to second what Brian said. I didn't know what he was gonna say. But we have had numerous cases since this change came about and it's very difficult. And if they want to add on to a house too, it's really a problem. So we really appreciate the help. I, I don't think we should write codes that we know are automatically gonna cause a variance request every time a house is built on a certain type of lot. And this would really be beneficial to change it back to the way it was. So we appreciate it.
Thank you. If there are no further questions from the public, we'll close the public portion. With that, are there any further questions of staff or commission members? If there are no further questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve new business item number one A.
Don't move.
Second, this is Jeff Foster.
Yeah, Mr. Riddle was the motion, Mr. Foster was the second. Fred, will you call the roll, please?
Okay. Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Cronteras?
Yes.
Mr. Riddle?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Woods? Mr. Woods?
Yes.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes, thank you. Moving right along. Item number one B, request to review and revise portions of article four, district uses, section A three, relative to total lot coverage and rear yard coverage in the NPD districts. Uh, Vicky, you want to?
Yes.
Speed on that?
Yeah, let me tee it up. First of all, before anybody gets excited, I don't want to alter the fifty percent lot coverage in any way, shape or form. With our stormwater issues that we have, I, I agree with no lot should have more than fifty percent impervious areas, area. So that, setting that aside, what has happened is we also have no more than thirty percent coverage in the rear yard and it started out as under the heading of accessory structures. Well, prior to the def, redefinition, uh, the definition that got changed about structure and impervious.
Vicky, I think you're turning your head away from the mic. We lost you again. Barely.
Okay, let me, whatever I did before, let me see if I can do that again.
There you go.
Is it working?
You're back.
Okay. All right, so what hap, has happened is when we redefined, uh, structure and impervious area and all that for the fifty percent. It spilled over into the rear yard thirty percent situation. And originally, when we were talking about no more than thirty percent in the rear yard, it had to do with detached garages and garden sheds and storage sheds and swimming pools. No more, but when they redefined structure and all that, it now, it's all muddled together. The fifty percent is anything that when it rains on, the water doesn't go through, the thirty percent of the backyard has come to mean the exact same thing. So when you, when you're calculating, first you calculate fifty percent, but then you have to go back and recalculate the thirty percent. So it's like you're doing, you're counting it twice, so to speak. And so what we wanted to do was absolutely keep the fifty percent, no more than fifty percent impervious area overall in the lot. But when we go back to the thirty percent in the rear yard, we want to take it back to what we looked at before. Detached garages, swimming pools, storage sheds, uh, you know, little, um, cabana sorts of things. Because we've already accounted for fifty percent of the stormwater runoff situation. So that's what, that's what we're trying to accomplish here.
Hey, thank you, Vicky. Are there any questions from commission members? Okay, to speak about this item, if we're gonna open it up to the public, if anybody wants to speak about this item, put your name and address in the chat box now. You'll be added to the speaker list. You can unmute when your name is called. Going to the speaker list, for Mr. Wallace, there are none. So we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Does any commission members have questions of Vicky? Vicky, I'll paraphrase for you. We tried to improve our situation with regards to stormwater runoff and we came up with the fifty percent. And this is in the rec, there's some conflicting factors here. And you and staff are trying to get them to align with these changes. Is that correct?
Yes.
Simple layman's terms?
In layman's terms, we're trying to refocus that thirty percent of block coverage in the rear yard to accessory structures. Not the same structures like sidewalks and, um, you know, driveways and all that that we, we've already counted in the overall for stormwater runoff. We don't need to do it again in the thirty percent rear yard coverage. We want to refocus it back to actual, you know, structures and uses.
Sure. Well, if there are no questions from commission members, I'd entertain a motion to approve new, new business item number one B.
Sorry, I did have one question. On the page three, under accessory structures, there's an and/or option here of G. Maximum area ground coverage by all structures, so not exceed more than fifty percent of lot area. And/or we can either drop the sentence from the accessory structures and just let the or, and then it goes to number four. So Vicky, I just so I'm clear, which one are we going with there? G?
Okay, let me get over there. Um.
I mean, G, G is the, she.
Think you get closer to the phone.
Sorry.
Yeah, so you cut, I lost you for a little bit there, but what I'm saying is the, the, the item marked G seems to be the simple and cleanest form of what we're trying to accomplish here. So the and/or below it, I don't think is necessary as an and. I'm fine with, I'm fine with referring back to the NPD section. I'm just having, uh, what, under four, I'm calling this four G. And you've got a note above it that says, since the intent is primarily to minimize storm runoff, we'd like to simplify the code as follows. G, maximum, et cetera. But then you have this section under here that says and/or, and I'm not, I, I, I think that my point was, if we're simplifying it, I'm fine. I just want to make sure what, what, what on the and/or is being kept versus what's being dropped.
The part about the 50% lot coverage based on, you know, for stormwater runoff is originally addressed, um, in the first part of NPD. We don't need to reiterate it in the accessory structures.
Yeah, right, totally agree, you're talking about the section under number four that's struck out?
Yes, yes, yes.
I'm, I'm, I'm just asking about the, you know what, never mind, I'm good with this. I, I, I know what you're going to, I know how you're going to clean this up, and I'm fine with it, I, I get the point, and I, I think we're all on, on agreement on that.
Okay, thank you.
Very pedantic, and I, I apologize.
Okay, if there are no further questions, I'd entertain a motion to approve new business item number one, B.
This is Jeff Foster, I, I make the motion to approve one B.
Second.
Second by Mr. Riddle, Fred, will you call the roll, please?
All right, Mr. Foster?
Yeah.
Mr. Cronteras? Mr. Cronteras? Okay.
You did, John.
Yeah, yeah, Cronteras, yes.
Okay, all right, Mr. Riddle?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Woods?
Yes.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes, thank you. Moving right along, new business item number one, C, request to review and revise Article 10, Administration and Review Procedures, Section A, Relative to Certified Mail Notifications. Uh, this is part of the process of posting and the postage that goes along with identifying. There are state minimum standards, and then we have our standards. I'm told that we exceed those, and we, as a, as a cost savings measure, we want to go back to what the state standards are. That was a request of, uh, I think, legal and staff, creates more work and more costs. Uh, Vicki, is there any?
Yes, yes, let me, you know, to simplify, where, the certified mail would go to the adjacent property owners, and the, everybody else in that 500, um, feet around the subject property would get just US mail. Um, we actually, a lot of people never go pick up the certified anyway, it, it's a waste of money, and it's, and it meets, still meets the standards for the state. There, and there's one paragraph in there also, if you'll see highlighted, the applicant shall complete number 10 plain white envelope supplied by the city. We haven't done that in, I don't know how, how many years. I was just wanting to strike that.
Did you say you wanted to strike that, Vicki?
Yeah, that about the number 10 envelopes, we don't do, we don't do that.
Right, okay.
Okay, but the most important thing is that we change it so that the certified mail only goes to the adjacent property owners, and the rest of the 500 feet are US first-class mail.
Okay. Uh, with that, we'll open up for the public to speak about this item, put your name and address in the chat box now. You'll be added to the speaker list, you can unmute when your name is called. Are there, is there anyone from the public that wants to question this, or has questions about this?
Doesn't look like it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Wallace. With that, we'll close the public portion. Uh, gentlemen, it seems pretty simple and straightforward. As I've heard staff say before, um, these certified go to the property owner. And if there's, there's been some confusion in the past, because people that are tenants say that they never got notified, well, it went to the owner. Uh, I think this is an attempt to save money, but also to clear up some of the confusion. Is that correct, Vicki?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. Entertain a motion to approve new, uh, new business item number one, C.
So moved.
Got a motion by Mr. Riddle, and a second by Mr. Foster. Fred, will you call the roll? Fred, are you there?
We lost Fred.
I'll, I'll come back to him then, Mr. Cronteras?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Riddle?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Woods?
Yes.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
And Mr. Foster?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, uh, there being no other business, if anyone has no questions, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Uh, Billy, Billy, I'd like to, uh, say, uh, have, have a second or two to thank you for, thank you for your serving as our, uh, uh, chair and vice chair through the years. Uh, we do appreciate your, uh, doing that for us, you've done a great job.
It's been my pleasure.
Uh, Mr. Higginbotham, can I, before we close the meeting, can I get any sense of direction from the commission? Next month, the October meeting, we do not have any cases, so unless something, unless something comes up, but we've already closed out any cases that would come forth. But I mentioned, I think, in an email to the commissioners that the next meeting
What?
The next meeting would, in November would be on the third, that's the national election, uh, day and night. And I didn't know if that was going to pose a problem for commissioners, if, if the commission, at this point, maybe you want to delay, and we can take a poll over the, an email, if they wanted to change that date or not. That's, I just throw that out there to let people know that that's coming up on November the third.
I think those are wise words, uh, I'll let the incoming chairman take that and deal with it, what do you make?